Good afternoon. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas South Texas College District. Board members present today at this time is Ms. Rosemary Bredele, Ms. Dolly Zimmerman, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Román Dino Sparza, Mr. Eduardo Campirano. Soliveta is currently on Southwest Airlines Flight 404, which should be landing in about five minutes in Harlingen, so he should be here shortly. And we have, of course, Dr. Julia V. Garcia. So, at this time, I'm going to call on Dr. Garcia to make an announcement, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to introduce to you and I our Dean of the School of Education, Dr. Carl Stockton, who is going to himself make a very important announcement. Dr. Stockton.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, friends, families, distinguished guests in the audience. It is my privilege tonight to introduce to you our Guinness World Book of Record official holders of that title for the longest reading marathon of 140 hours and two minutes. And we just received a few days ago the official approval from the Guinness World Book of Records, so UTB TSC is in the record books. And we're very, very thrilled, and let me pass this so you can take a look at it. We're very thrilled by the 300 people that helped us with the support, not only the faculty, the staff, the students, the community, the school districts, the paramedics on our campus that saved us two days before the marathon. It really, really was a community effort, and we could not have done that without everyone's support. I want to tell just a couple of quick stories because, before I introduce our readers. I remember one night about three o'clock in the morning, Dr. Ayala, who was leading the team in reading, about 20 minutes before his hour, he was starting to fade, so I went and sat on the couch next to him. He woke up and said, "I'm awake, boss." And then, he started, he was reading a book that had English print, and he started to translate in Spanish, from English to Spanish at 3:40 in the morning. And there were many of those stories that we can tell. And the thing that's really exciting, though, is the children in the community. The children in the community were watching on the Internet, and they had chatted to Dr. Carmen, one of our other readers, they wanted to listen to Dr. Seuss. And so she went and got Dr. Seuss books, and the children in the community were listening. The next morning, two children came and brought her cookies and thanked her for reading the Dr. Seuss books. So there were many, many of those stories that we can share, but at this time, I'd like to, again, thank everybody, and before we introduce our readers, we have a short video that we'd like to share with everybody about the event, and then we'd like to introduce our readers. Thank you. That was just kind of a summary of what happened, and yes, when they broke the record at the 128-hour mark, Dr. Carmen had to continue to read through that, and they read for another 12 hours and one minute. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our four record holders. Please come up here, Dr. Javier Ayala, Dr. Carmen Garcia-Cassidis, Ms. Barbara Monroe, and Ms. Catalina Espinoza. And Dr. Ayala, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. The last time I was here, I had brought news that we had taken UTB TSC to a national level with the winning of the first place with the NASA Pre-Service Teacher Conference. We did it three years in a row, brought national recognition to this university. Now we say we brought world recognition to this university. And Dr. Cassidis says the next one is we're going to read from the space shuttle. But anyway, it was a wonderful exercise in how our school, our community, the university could come together and do something extraordinary, something unusual, something that showed what we can do when we put our minds and our hearts together, and come up with something crazy and do it, and enjoy doing it, and bring a message, not only to the university but to the community of the importance of reading and what reading is as a foundation for all learning, not just in a reading class but even for the content area. We experienced the limits sometimes of our mind and our bodies, as Dr. Stockton was saying. The book was in English, but I was reading in Spanish, so it's a point where conscious and subconscious starts to blur, and we begin to see things and try to shake our bodies back to consciousness. We were given one hour only every four hours to either eat, sleep, go to the restroom, or do whatever we needed, and that was it. The rest of the time, we had to be awake and listening to the readers. So I commend the team, the group, and everyone who helped us to do this. We could not have done it if it had not been for the over 300 individuals that helped us in some way or another and made this possible, so thank you very much.
Yes, it was an exciting experience, and definitely, as we were coming over, I said, "Javier, what are we going to do next?" So then I had this crazy idea, and of course, knowing Javier, he says, "Okay, let's do it." So who knows? We might be back here to let you know that we have broken another record in the spaceship. But it was a lot of fun. Yes, we didn't know what we were in for, and especially when we realized all the rules that we had to follow. Once we were in that room, you couldn't go out. I remember one day when my husband came over, he knocked on the window, and I just, "Mm", and so then they opened up the door. I said, "I can't go outside, we'll be disqualified." So it was some very rigid type of rules that we followed, but it was possible. And I always say, you know, that when you have an idea in your mind, and you really believe it in your heart, then you can do it. It's the very words of Jesse Jackson, that you can do this. And for me, literacy is, you know, the primary thing. My life is all in literacy. I'm a reading specialist, it's one of my degrees, and I have a lot of fun. This morning, I just finished our May session where I was teaching emergent literacy, and for this past month, we've been working with three, four, and five-year-olds, and so we invited the dean. So the dean came in, I think he had a lot of fun in there. He was singing right along with our little kids. But it's the very, very beginning of everything, and the realization that there were children watching us, you know, the cookie story that he told you about. But there was another story of the one day that I went to one of the schools, you know, and they were all looking at me, and there were all this little whispering going along. Finally, a teacher came over, and she said, "Can you come over? The children want to talk to you because one of them recognized you." I happen to have used, one day, I put the Dr. Seuss scarf on, okay? So there I was with my little hat and my little tie and my little cat outfit, and so he recognized me as the Cat in the Hat. "The Cat in the Hat is here!" So I went over, and that meant a lot. And to me, that means a lot, you know, the realization and really getting them to be so involved in reading, you know? And so that was exciting for me. So if you ask me, "Carmen, would you do it again?", I say, "I'm the first one there in life." No problem.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Barbara Monroe. I'm a graduate student here at UTB with the College of Liberal Arts, and I have just recently completed an ACP program, Alternative Certification, with the School of Education. I am very proud and honored to have been a part of this world record-breaking event because I read, I like to read, I believe in reading, I'm a reading advocate. I believe that we can learn and enrich our lives through reading, children and adults as well. So, again, once again, I'm honored to be a part of this.
Good afternoon, this is Catalina Espinoza. It was a good experience being in there. I'm a reading advocate too. I work, I'm going for my degree for Child Care and Development. I love kids, and that's basically what they like to do, read, and especially, the whole thing in there was fun. It was hard to a point, and it was fun to another point. We had a lot of fun between us three there, we would joke around, we would, we forgot everything out there. It was only in there, inside the room, the four walls, and that was it. So we really want to thank everybody who was there and who was supporting us throughout the whole six days, and thank you. And we'd like to give you a cap for being there and for your support.
We'd like to thank you for coming today, Dr. Stockton, for, thank you, for your leadership, thank you very, very much, for your leadership, and for putting us on the world map. There are many ways to get into the Guinness Book. This is probably the best you could have thought of, which is to my blessings, we're very proud of all of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here.
We're going to be a little bit out of order on our agenda this evening, and so we begin with an announcement. And it is with deep regret that the Texas South Texas College Board of Trustees announces the resignation of trustee Román Dino Sparza. Mr. Sparza was appointed to the board in June 2005 upon the resignation of Mrs. Mayros Carras. The next year, Mr. Sparza ran a successful election campaign and was elected to the board for a two-year term. Since his appointment to the board in '05, Mr. Sparza has been an able steward for the Texas South Texas College District, an esteemed colleague and friend, and a tireless champion for the students of UTB TSC. The board thanks Mr. Sparza for his efforts and wishes him well in all his endeavors. And I just want to thank you, Dino, personally, for all the hard work that you've engaged with the rest of the board to achieve the mission of the University College. I know that your decision is based on business reasons, and I'm going to miss you. So on behalf of the board, I thank you for being on this board, and for thanking your family, your wife Jennifer, for allowing you to serve on this board. And I know that while your void will be felt on the board, I know that on other committees we can count on you to serve in other capacities. So, again, thank you very much, sir.
Actually, thank you, Chester, and fellow trustees, Dr. Garcia. I truly enjoyed serving with you and representing the district and the constituents of our district. It was one of the most fulfilling experiences I've had besides getting married and starting my family. When it came down to making the decision that I had to make, please understand that it came down to pursuing a professional opportunity that I felt was in the best interest of my family. And at the same time, I felt presented the situation where I knew I had to resign my position from the board, and whether it be my personality or reading too much into things, I felt that the professional endeavor I was engaging in presented me with a conflict that required me to resign. And as hard as it was, I know I made the right decision. I won't look back. I know that I will continue to serve in whatever capacity is needed of me. The college and the people here, staff, the administration, mean a lot to me. Seeing what's going on here has become a part of my life. I'm very proud of it, and I want to continue to be a part of it. It's tremendous for our community, and knowing what I know, I can't wait to see what's going to continue to go on here, and I want to be a part of it, just in a different capacity. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'd like to thank the people for the opportunity to allow them, for allowing me to serve them in the capacity that they did. And I stand here at your beck and call, Chester.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's always tough to lose someone as valuable as Dino, but while the mission continues, sometimes the pilots have to change the control of the plane, but the mission continues, and we're still doing the positive things that we need to do for higher education in our district. So, thank you again, Dino. Appreciate it.
And if I might say, we need advocacy in all different aspects of our work, and we need advocacy from citizens, private citizens, and from businessmen and women, professionals, and especially from those who believe in our work. So we will continue to harass you, you must continue to return our calls, and as Chester says, the work here requires broader participation than only membership on this board or at this university. So we thank you, sir, for your willingness to join the work.
I don't think Dino should get off that easily. One is that certainly disappointed in not serving on this board with Dino as we go forward. I think in, I for one, really respected your opinions, your thoughts. I think you brought something to us at times that were of very calming effect. I think you looked at things perhaps a little bit differently sometimes than we did in terms of, you know, the fact that you are raising a family, and you may have a little bit closer connections, looking at what you're leaving here for them in the future. I personally am going to miss you, Dino, immensely, but I certainly would continue to appreciate your constructive criticism, your thoughts, and certainly, you know, keeping us in line. And I'm disappointed that you're no longer here, but I am excited for your opportunities and for that of your family, and with that, we all have to respect that, so, thank you, Dino.
So, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to depart from the post agenda and move to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting, and then return back later to items two and three. So I ask for a motion to approve the meetings of April 26.
The move, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
Motion should be made by Mr. Campirano, second by Mrs. Bredele. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item five, speakers to agenda items and public discussion. Mary, do we have any speakers on the agenda? Okay. Item six is a board briefing on the youth on campus. Dr. Jenna Arnie will present this, I believe? Is that correct?
That's right.
Dr. Arnie?
Jenna is our interim vice president for academic, associate, excuse me, our associate vice president for academic affairs. Dr. Arnie, please.
Thank you. I can, and we have a couple of others that are here joining the meeting. The topic here is youth on campus, and throughout the year, you have many, many programs that have brought you to campus, preschool, high school, we host large rooms. If you're on campus at all, and all of you are, you see people coming and going all of the time across campus, which is a great way to get into the state of campus life. Today, we're joined by Carla Semio and John Feig. Carla Semio is our student, new student relations coordinator, and John Feig is the executive student affairs today. Both of them play a huge role in bringing you to campus, and future Scorpion's are through campus tours, Scorpion Day, and lots of other activities, which I'll share a few of those today with you, some of the events that affect our youth on campus. So please welcome them, please.
Good evening. It's truly the pleasure to be with you and I to share information, provide a brief update about the many activities and opportunities that have brought you from across the Rio Grande Valley, the South Texas region, to our wonderful campus. To help paint the picture and highlight some of this year's lively events, we have put together for you with the help of media services, a brief slideshow presentation. As Dr. Arnie mentioned, we have major children on campus throughout the year. Some of the events you may be familiar with, such as the distinguished lecture series for Valley students, which attracts between 900 and 1,500 students each year. Our Rio Grande Valley Regional Science Fair, that brings more than 300 of the Valley's very best and brightest students and their families to campus annually. And Kids College, that serves more than 300 children and teens during the summer months. We have many other events as well, both large and small, that attract folks to campus. Our chess team holds community clinics, as well as competitions on campus. Our annual Texas Scorpion Day event. This past February, this event alone brought over 1,500 area high school seniors to campus. The event is designed to increase awareness of programs of study, the college admissions process, the process of applying for financial aid and scholarships, campus lights, and much more. Our Scorpion Open House, this event targets the community and provides access to various enrollment services, and recently, this event drew over 1,000 visitors to campus. Our dual enrollment summer bridge program, this program offers early access to college opportunities to high school students. During the next few weeks, we will have over 400 high school students, primarily in grades 11th and 12th, on campus, taking college classes, receiving tutoring and mentoring, and attending enrichment activities. Programs such as our Music Academy, sponsored by the Fine Arts Department, offers young people a great way to learn and enjoy music within the professional community. Programs such as our Athletic Camps, these give participants the opportunity to grow in skills through drills, introduction to philosophies, and by meeting other athletic participants. Camps are offered in many different areas. Scouting activities, these activities, which we held recently, brought over 300 scouts from the Lower Rio Grande Valley who camped out on the Student Union lawn and participated in ghost tours, career awareness, in addition to their scouting activities. The UTB TSC Center for Civic Engagement teamed up with Kids Voting USA and offered students in kindergarten through high school an opportunity for civic learning. The South Texas Engineering and Math Science Program, this outreach initiative promotes field experience, community projects, and assists students with access to college. This program also provides career exploration and awareness in the area of sciences. As you can see from the variety of activities, that we capitalize on the interest of our visitors and relate it to the bigger picture of higher education and careers beyond. We have been and remain intensely committed to making every visit to campus an exciting and valuable one for young people. As a result of campus visits, tremendous opportunities have been created, allowing thousands of young elementary, middle, and high school students to connect with UTB TSC. As hosts to our many visitors and future Scorpions each and every year, we continue in our dedication to the vision that visits to the UTB TSC campus serve as an important catalyst in motivating, encouraging, and inspiring the youth towards access, participation, and success in higher education. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. John Feig, who represents the area of Student Affairs, to also provide some information in, from that area.
Thank you, Carla.
Good evening. We have in the Student Affairs Division some outreach grants that have been in operation for several years and hopefully will continue, and I want to talk about some of the students that are participating in those, and these are students that are middle school and high school students at this particular time, not only in Brownsville schools but also in some of our surrounding communities. University Talent Search is one of our programs, and this summer, they will be bringing 70 students onto our campus, and these are students who will be in the sixth grade next year in Brownsville schools. These students will be residential and for two nights here on campus at the Village at Fort Brown. They will have a variety of activities, both here on campus, they'll go to the NASA facility in San Benito as part of their camp, and they will also go to South Padre Island to go on an eco tour and have other activities. These students then, as seventh graders, will be introduced into the Talent Search program. Talent Search actually serves 600 students in Brownsville schools. Classic Upward Bound is another outreach program that we've had for a number of years. They will be bringing 114 students onto our campus this summer. Thirty-two of those will be residential at the Village at Fort Brown during first summer session. They will be taking dual enrollment courses for a summer session. Fifty-two additional students that participate in Classic Upward Bound will be commuters for dual enrollment courses this summer on campus. Additionally, the Classic Upward Bound program will have 30 intern students for six weeks. Most of those, all but one, will be doing their internship on campus. They will be interning 10 hours a week for that program. The Upward Bound Math and Science Program, another one that you may have read about in the news or heard about, been very successful in helping students earn an associate degree before they graduate from high school, will be bringing 45 students on campus as commuters for first summer session for dual enrollment courses, and 14 additional students, second summer session, also for dual enrollment. The Youth Empowerment Program is a new grant that the Student Affairs Division was awarded last September the first. It serves 40 students in Lopez High School, and those 40 students will be on this campus periodically throughout the summer, participating in a number of activities. They'll be attending yoga classes, cardiovascular classes, nutrition classes, and classes to prepare them to pass the ECOMPAS exam, which is the test the students take for placement in college classes. Carlo already alluded to some of the athletic camps that we have on campus. If you're interested, right now, we have registration going on for the baseball summer camp, so if you've got one between fourth grade and ninth grade, sign them up. The camp is starting on Sunday, ends on Tuesday. Don't miss out. The Gear Up Project at University of Texas Pan American and at Region One Education Service Center is also bringing students to our campus in June. There will be 100 students on our campus the week of June the 11th, and another 100 students on our campus the week of June the 18th. And these will be commuters. These students will be focusing on some career investigation, and they will also be These students will be focusing on some career investigation, and they will also be working in specific content areas. The first week of this program will be focusing on writing and history, and the second week will be focusing on science and math. These students coming to our campus will be taught by faculty members at UTB TSC while they're on our campus, participating in the academic section of this program. And this is an ongoing project. The Gear Up programs have both requested that these be add-on projects, and that for each of the next four summers, they intend to sponsor students on our campus for these and other kinds of experiences that are available here at UTB TSC.
It is important that we acknowledge that success in campus visits is the result of the efforts of many departments and staff, ranging from the folks in physical plant and grounds personnel who make our campus such a beautiful place to visit, to campus police that keep our visitors safe, the scheduling office that helps us reserve facilities that are used during events, faculty who give their time to visit with groups, staff from enrollment planning, and also the teachers, guidance counselors, and high school administrators who make these events possible. We also wanna thank our students and student mentors, who help conduct many of these campus activities, and who serve as important role models to our visitors. Being involved with activities that bring young people to campus is very fulfilling and rewarding. It is impressive to often hear our young visitors, when they talk amongst themselves about what they wanna be when they grow up, and their future careers, or how big they think our campus is, or how they really like what they experienced during their visit to UTB TSC. It is exciting to see the faces of our young visitors light up when they walk into one of our classrooms, or one of our health science labs, or when we talk to them about how exciting student life can be. Throughout the year, visits by youth have allowed us to share the beauty and history of our campus and its facilities. These visits have also served to raise an awareness of the many opportunities offered at UTB TSC. I'd like to thank you all very much for this opportunity to share with you, and to provide a brief update of the many activities that we offer, and I wanna thank you very much for that opportunity. Thanks.
I think it's so important to have a outreach program for our community students at an early age. As we know, college doesn't begin when you graduate from high school, it begins way, way before that. And to have programs that entice and bring our students at age of second, third, fourth graders, I believe he was mentioning, is such a great, great concept, to engage students in higher education at an early stage in their lives. And I believe that once they get the spark ignited inside their hearts and souls, they're gonna be college graduates. So I commend you for the work that you do. It's such a wonderful facet of higher education to reach out, bring the community to our campus, so they can also have the dreams that Dr. Robles and I have. Thank you very much.
But, Mr. Chairman, you please understand also that these two gentlemen are out in the community as well, because, Mr. Tamayo, I have spoken with and arranged for tours on campus, as well as our parent fairs, and he has sent representatives. Mr. Feist, I have heard, on the island at Counselors Conference, and so they're both out there with their shirts and logos, and they're selling the university, and they're great stewards. So I wanna thank you for that, 'cause you don't realize, there's people out there watching you as well, so, thank you.
Is there a certain age when the student has pretty much made a conception of what he plans to do with his life regarding higher education? I see that you're targeting the young, you know, children.
We see it at all ranges, from the very early elementary to the middle and high schools. I think it just depends on the student, the environment, and their experiences. But I've seen first and second graders who know that they're gonna be lawyers and doctors or police officers, and I hear stories of folks and alumni that I come across, who knew what they were gonna be at that age. And then there are others that might be high school seniors who are still exploring. They're still, you know, getting their research, and they're out there. And we do everything that we can to help them explore. And it's a big decision, so we do everything we can.
Outstanding.
Now, just to, Mr. Chairman, I was eight years old when I thought that I wanted to be a doctor at age eight, so it was a long road. But, you know, the work that you do is so important to this community university, because when you bring the child here, I can remember as a kid, thinking about college was such a far-fetched idea for me, and such a scary thought, that coming onto the campus and experiencing it, saying, hey, see, it doesn't really hurt, you know, it's a great place to come and learn and have fun. And those are the first times, those are the first opportunities that we have to bring those little minds onto our campus, and hopefully, that we are prepared to receive them, and so that they can go back home and talk to their parents about their experience here. And I am sure they've got lots of stories to tell their parents. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robles.
Thank you, Carlo. Thank you, John, very, very much for that. And that is just a glimpse of the kinds of things that occur here. Because throughout the year, as you've heard, there are thousands of students on campus that are constantly here for other kinds of tours and activities. So if you asked whether or not we had expanded our marketing efforts, it's not just what you watch on television, it is much more important than that. It is what this one-on-one relationship building that occurs not only with students, but as Zimmerman mentions, with teachers, with principals, different attendants, and parents, that is so key in making that pathway a smoother one for students. So I thank you, on behalf of all of the students that benefit from your work.
Good job. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Moving on from that discussion to something more exciting, like the annual financial audit report. We have Ms. Melba Sanchez, our comptroller. And there are fascinating numbers, okay, Melba?
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Garcia, the district requested bids for audit services, and received two proposals for the current fiscal year. One was from Long and Chilton, and one was from Patillo, Brown and Hill. Staff is recommending Long Chilton, our current auditing firm, as they are highly qualified and presented a thorough and comprehensive proposal. With the assistance of staff from Long and Chilton, the district is in the process of compiling a comprehensive annual financial report, often referred to as the CAFER, for future year end reporting and audits. We feel it is important that this momentum continue in order to realize potential benefits as the district proceeds to issue bonds. The district has had a successful relationship with this firm, therefore, staff is recommending a continuation of this contract. At this time, staff is recommending a motion to select Long Chilton to conduct the district's audit for fiscal year two thousand six, two thousand seven, for thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, with an option to renew for an additional two years.
May I ask again? And one of the main reasons you want to continue with them is because they've started a process, is that not correct?
We have begun the process.
And we'd like to complete this process.
That is correct. That is correct.
Because I am sure both bids were, or both companies were people that we've done business with, and we will continue to do business with.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I agree that it would be, I don't think it's a good idea to shift companies in the middle of a process that's very, already far advanced, and so I think that we should go with the recommendation here.
Eddie? Any questions?
I mean, this is for, what we would be doing today would be for the upcoming fiscal year. I mean, there is an option to look at for an additional year, or an additional two years, but, you know, that's just an option. That's still gonna have to be a decision, that's gonna have to be made by the board, so, you know, staff recommendation to, you know, use Long and Chilton. I think the CAFER is an important document. I know that a lot of work went into it this year, and I hate to see us lose whatever opportunities. I will say, though, that, you know, both firms are equally qualified, they both have to follow the same rules, the same regulations, they're both familiar with our business, so, you know, they're equally qualified, but I certainly appreciate staff's recommendation.
So, a motion to accept Long Chilton as the audit organization for the college has been made. It's okay, made by Ms. Zimmerman?
I just have a question.
Question?
On the recommended actions, thirty thousand, and then on the total, on the second page here, thirty-two thousand, what, is there?
The foundation, the foundation was included in the total bid, and the amount for the foundation alone is two thousand dollars. So the sum of the district's audit and the foundation, TSC foundation audit is the thirty-two thousand, two thirty-five. But for the district alone, which is what you're right.
Thirty thousand, okay.
That is correct.
All right, so.
A motion. Second.
Seconded by Dr. Robles. Any other further questions, any? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a report by Ms. Abrela on the institutional effectiveness goals of the partnership committee, and, Abrela?
The Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Committee convened in open session on March eighth, two thousand seven. Members present were Ms. June Tolan, a community member, Ms. Lynn DePaul, South Senate member, Ms. Susan Stensing, community member, Ms. Karen Sosumer, academic senate president, Mr. Abraham Fonse, student government president, Dr. Jose Martin, provost and co-chair. In the following were guests in attendance. Dr. Joel Alapa, student government senator, Dr. Ruth Ann Ragland, Dr. Charles Damren, Dr. Eldon Nelson, Dr. Manol Moot, Dr. Eli Peña, Dr. David Pearson, Dr. Charles Wackey, Dr. Carl Stockton, Dr. Peter Govenda, Dr. Hilda Silva, Dr. Marilyn Woods, Dr. Steve Chen, and Dr. Joe Zavala. It was a good, full meeting. The meeting began with the introduction of the two new community members, Ms. June Tolan and Ms. Susan Stensing, who have graciously accepted the invitation to serve on the committee as community representatives. Dr. Moot, director of the institutional research and planning, presented information on student participation rates in the UTB TSC service area and in the state of Texas. Dr. Moot reported that UTB TSC service area exceeded Texas Hispanic participation rate in the fall of two thousand six. Given that Hispanic participation rates in other parts of the state did not show the desired improvement in participation rates, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board was forced to lower expectations for the participation rate of Hispanics in other parts of the state. The achievements in participation rate in this service area suggest a reversal of enrollment trends by UTB TSC. Additionally, enrollment projections at UTB TSC suggest that by two thousand ten, the participation rate at UTB TSC will exceed that of the state, closing the participation gap that existed in Cameron and Willacy counties in two thousand. That's really good news. Dr. Peña, but we still always have a long way to go, excuse me. Dr. Peña, Director of Institutional Effectiveness, provided information on a proposed visit by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, SACS, in two thousand eight, and discussed its role in the development and approval of a doctoral program submitted and approved by SACS. The application for the university's first ever doctoral program was submitted and approved by SACS. On July nineteenth, two thousand seven, this summer, the institutional plans for this doctoral program will go before the coordinating board. In November, a committee of our peers will review and scrutinize UTB TSC accreditation responses. And on April eighth, two thousand eight, three teams will visit the university to examine and review compliance reports, qualified enhancement plans, and the proposed plan for the institution's first doctoral program. Dr. Peña also reported that preparation for SACS reaffirmation of accreditation visit, UTB TSC will conduct a self-study, which will examine various aspects of the entire campus, including administration, faculty, governance, coursework, and financial status. The alignment of the institutional plans and goals with the university mission is essential in this assessment process. Furthermore, the university must be able to demonstrate that the results obtained from this self-study have been utilized to improve university effectiveness and compliance. The meeting included a presentation by Dean Ethel Cantoon, in which he reported on the characteristics of the Blackboard outcomes system, and its uses in the development and implementation of institutional effectiveness goals. Dean Cantoon reported that UTB TSC has the honor of being the first campus in the world to implement this system. Faculty can use Blackboard to organize information, such as syllabi or class assignments, and can draw upon it as a resource for maps and pictures as well. Blackboard allows for content delivery of instruction. It can also be leveraged to introduce students in freshman seminar classes to information literacy, increasing competency in this area. Once the Blackboard system is implemented, it will be utilized for planning, evaluation, and alignment of the university mission, goals, and measures. At the meeting, Dr. Jose Martin led a discussion about university planning documents and the institutional goals. Through SACS, or though SACS does not require an institution to have a strategic plan, it does call for the demonstration of institutional effectiveness and implementation of governing planning documents. The governing planning documents of UTB TSC include closing the gaps, the university mission statement, strategic plan, the futures commission, and the master plan for the evaluation, or the evolution, I'm sorry, the evolution of the campus over the next ten years. However, rapid institutional growth has created the need for a revised master plan and a strategic plan. Further, in the revision of the university planning documents, the institution also needs to consider a new UTB, or the new UT system's strategic plan, with specific requirements in all areas relating to the student's success, to research, programs, and grants. Based on the elements of the planning documents, different constituencies at UTB TSC decided that the following five institutional goals should be adopted as the goals for institutional effectiveness. One, provide accessible, affordable post-secondary education. Two, promote excellence in teaching and learning. Three, enhance student success. Four, advance academic and economic development in this region. And five, expand knowledge through research. These goals will also provide the foundation for the new UTB TSC strategic plan. I'll now call in Dr. Garcia to give us a brief overview of the framework for the new strategic plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Abrela. The, obviously, the well-attended meeting produced an awful lot of results, and we're very pleased that you did. This is a very significant time in our cycle as it's a university. Every ten years, we are reviewed for reaffirmation of accreditation by Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, and our time is nigh, it is here. And so, for that purpose, it requires that everybody, campus-wide, take a look at all kinds of systems, and not only in terms of whether or not you have systems in place, but most importantly, how effective those systems are toward reaching your goals. And so that really tries to provide a framework for what you were talking about in your committee, and what Dr. Peña, and what Dr. Moot will discuss with us in just a moment. We have many planning documents on campus, you all have been part of that. We revised our mission when we added the university to the community college mission. We are part of the UT system strategic plan, in which we've been part of their work this last year, working with all of the other fourteen components in the system, come together toward a singular focus. We have campus compacts that we produce every year. Campus compacts are presented, I present them, they're provided by all the vice presidents in their each divisions, I present them then to the chancellor, and the chancellor then bases his evaluation of my work and of the work of the university, on whether or not we achieved the work in the campus compact. We have partnership measures that this committee has been working on for many years. We have the futures commission, that we worked on several years ago, that produced significant amount of envisioning for what we might do in the future. And then, of course, we have our own strategic plan. So the intent was, how do you take all of these disparate kind of elements, and pull them together, and weave them into something that can now provide you a clear focus for what's next? It's easier to do, in many ways, when you think about a single piece of it. What should the campus look like in twenty years? But the real work is not what the campus should look like, it's for what reason? What are you going to, what areas are you going to grow in? What do you need for nursing, or what do you need for the liberal arts, or what do you need for library services? That serves as the framework for then deciding what kind of campus, for example, you need in the future. So this is the very root of what will set- So this is the very root of what will set the stage for the campus's strategic focus over the next ten years. It requires a tremendous amount of work and process. And so now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Eli Peña and Dr. Moot to talk about the process that we're going to be going through this year in preparation for the visit by SACs that will occur in April of 2008.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, Mr. Chairman, and board members. Briefly, I want to talk about, let's see, this is not on. He's turning it on. From the direction of Dr. Martin, our provost, we began to work on a project of what you see here on the screen, and that was, we took our institutional mission statement and we, a group of us looked at it and came up with twelve different elements. On these elements, we then compared our strategic plan 2001, 2005, the last two campus compacts, the futures commission, and institutional effectiveness partnership measures. We tried to bring all of the elements of these documents in line with the mission statement and how they fit together. We also proceeded then to look at the new strategic plan from the University of Texas system, and which has six major goals, and of course, many objectives, to make sure that what we were doing here on campus was also in line with those goals. And of course, as Ms. Breedlove has stated, these are the five institutional goals that we derived from all the work that was done by various folks on campus. And again, these goals were reviewed by provost council and our members of the executive council, deans council, deans and chairs. Throughout all the institutional divisions, these goals were also looked at and are being utilized in the planning process for institutional effectiveness and our strategic planning for this campus. The goals were also reviewed with our Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Committee. As part of our SACs reaffirmation of accreditation, there are two major requirements in SACs, probably have a total of eighty requirements that we have to look at. One is the core requirement 2.5 that deals with institutional effectiveness, and it links institutional effectiveness to our mission statement. It uses the assessment results to accomplish the purpose of the institutional mission, and it shows effectiveness of institutional programs and services. This requirement is a broad requirement, looking at the institution as a whole. The comprehensive statement 3.3.1 also deals with institutional effectiveness, but it looks at different areas within the campus: our educational programs, our administrative support programs, educational support, research, and then now, community service and public service. The last two elements, research and community and public service, were just added this last December, and so now we are held accountable for those two areas also in our responses. As an example of one of the things that is happening on this campus, if we look at this screen, and I want you to start at the bottom, every department on campus, every academic department is now making sure, we're making sure that they have their goals, they have a plan for how they will assess the goals, and they will produce a yearly report. Within the departmental goals, there will be goals for every academic program, that is for every major, and there will be student learning outcomes for these programs, along with a plan on how to assess student learning outcomes for every program, and a yearly report. Department goals then will be tied to school and college goals, to division goals, and to the institutional goals tied to the mission statement, so that we have alignment from the mission statement all the way down to the student learning outcomes. We will have a major workshop on this later in June in the academic area. Let me assure you that the other divisions are also working on the same thing. This morning, I met with the Division of Student Services, and they're fairly well in line with doing the same thing, where they're aligning departmental goals with their division goals and institutional goals. And again, as I've stated, the other divisions are doing the same thing: financial services and all the other services. And so, I thank you for listening, and any questions that you may have on our process as we establish these five institutional goals that will help to guide institutional effectiveness and our future in strategic planning.
Dr. Peña, with the evolution of partnership over the past couple of years and the growth of the university, has there been any one defining strategy that was not applicable maybe four years ago that it is today because of the growth of the institution and the academic program that we're going to have in campus?
The big emphasis that probably we had not given as much, maybe nationwide, that we had not given as much attention to, is this idea of student learning outcomes. If you look at the UT system strategic plan, it is clearly stated in there. If you look at our accreditation agency, it's stated in there. Washington, the Stellings Commission is working on that. And so, this is something that we have to pay close attention. We have been doing it, but now we're being held more accountable for, to demonstrate that we say that we're doing what we say we're doing.
You know, we have external measures, like in nursing, where they have to take a licensure exam; in teaching, where they have to pass an exit exam, or in areas like that, we've been testing ourselves. But we've not tested ourselves in all of the other areas that don't have external review, except that you're being tested all the time, students would tell you, in every class that you take, by every professor. And so, but that's harder to document, and now they're asking for more quantitative and qualitative measures. And the other answer to your question, which is a very important one, is I believe the emphasis that will have more on not growth in number, but growth in quality. And I see, for a variety of reasons, a bit of a slowdown, and so I'm kind of forewarning that we're going to be much more interested in looking at not only that student coming to our door, but making sure that student comes prepared, once they're here, that they proceed to move forward in, you know, with good progress, and succeed all the way through. So, we have met our demand in terms of number of Hispanics participating in higher ed. And as Mrs. Breedlove said, we've actually exceeded the state average in that number. But we haven't yet in terms of getting them all the way through the system, and there we don't compare so well. So I think that's going to be the big difference as we proceed to adjust our academic standards for progress in other areas.
I have a question. I guess that question, based on what you just said, I have a question of something you said, but does that mean we're going to be moving towards away from open enrollment and looking at, you know, application to acceptance?
There's no reason that you can, that open, admissions does not have to be the only C by which you decide whether or not a student will succeed. But if a student, well-prepared or not, comes into the campus and just kind of gets dropped in and doesn't engage with any person, their preparation may or may not have anything to do with how well they do. So there are other ways of taking that student, well-prepared or not, and supporting them through those first few years here that we're going to be focusing on. And those are, and we have been, but now in a more conservative way. Those, I think, are preferable to simply pre-selection on the front end, based on a SAT score or an ACT score or some other arbitrary predictor. Dr. Peña, you talked about at the beginning where you looked at the various things to try to align. One of the things you said is you looked at the UT system strategic plan and see how they align with, I would imagine, with our document. But you said they have six goals. What's their sixth?
Good question.
I mean, are they comparable to these?
They were comparable to these, yeah. Thank you.
What, national football title?
Thank you.
Partnership academic.
My pardon, I can't say. The, their goals are enhancing student success, increasing research, global competitiveness, and technology transfer, improving health in Texas, enriching society through arts and culture contributions, improving productivity and efficiency, and assuring integrity, accountability, and public trust.
So they're not the same all the way through?
They're not the same.
They've been restructured to fit our needs.
But they all mean the same thing, right? Bring home the national championship.
Correct. And the Miami and the ball locker.
Okay. I do want to say that I really would like to thank the, many people on this campus who have really come forth, vice presidents, deans, department chairs, faculty, in working very hard to begin this process of making sure that every program on this campus has learning outcomes that we will measure and we will look at and align with all the way with our mission statement to become an effective institution or to become a better institution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peña.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Breedlove. For.
I just want, Dr. Breedlove, would you?
I just have one comment for Mr. Camprano. One other thing that our strategic plan does is that it tries to align our community college mission with the UT strategic plan mandate, and that's been quite a, quite a challenge.
Quite an audience, it's quite a challenge.
And one thing that UT's strategic plan doesn't have is providing access and affordable post-secondary education that we do have, and that's how we have tried to walk the tightrope. Thank you.
That's a good way of saying it, Dr. Breedlove.
Thank you. May I, you know, again, and that's the reason our student participation rate has, is where we would like it to be throughout the state, because that gap within the state is still huge, and it's getting bigger instead of smaller. But we never want to be comfortable, and that's why I'm very, you know, still very excited about being on this committee. I think this committee is very committed to make sure that the student outcomes, we have a good product at the, we have a good product at the end when they graduate and when they go out to work in this community or anyplace, that there are, it is exactly what they needed to have when they arrive at their new job. And I'd like to personally thank you both, Dr. Moot and Dr. Peña, it's been a huge job, I know, and it's not over yet. SACs comes in July, and then the big, the big visit is in April next year, and we're all behind you. And I know it's taken lots of people, lots of people, it's all the way down to the student level, and, you know, we also want to thank everybody. We know this is extremely difficult, and we're very aware, but we appreciate your hard work because you all have been the taskmasters, and we appreciate, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's everybody's pleasure. I know we're excited about this. So the committee recommends, and I move, to adopt the five institutional effectiveness goals as presented, and if you want me to read them again, I shall.
That is on item.
So motions.
On item eight.
Okay. So, is there a question, somebody else?
Yeah. No, it's okay, I'll just.
So, motions are made by Breedlove, committee, and second by Mr. Robles. Dr. Robles has seconded.
Second.
So, are there any further items for discussion on this motion?
No.
No? Then may I have a vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
May I commend the committee for such hard work, and Breedlove, and for your participation in this hard endeavor? Such an important meeting. Thank you. Item number nine is the bond projects proposals for brick material. Dr. David Pearson, the brick meister.
A goal of his.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Dr. Garcia, the era of bond construction is upon us. And I recognize, as I think of this process, one of the things that occurs to me is that here to fore, it's looked almost like a stealth process. That is, there's a tremendous amount of work going on behind the scenes with a variety of constituencies, decision-makers, people giving input into all of the myriad construction projects that we have going on, but until recently, it hasn't looked like a whole lot has taken place. So I forewarn all of you, the era of construction is indeed upon us, and very, very soon. Tonight, what we'd like to do is give the board an update on the progress of the various bond construction projects, and I'll finish with the bricks. Since the completion of schematic design for all the bond projects earlier this year, our architects have been hard at work, hard at work trying to complete what's called the design development phase of the plans and specifications. What design development is, is a phase where the majority of the details are incorporated into the project itself. Design development drawings are now in hand for the following projects: for the Center for Early Childhood Studies, those were received in March; for the new library and the classroom buildings, those were received in April; and for the new music education building, which were received just earlier this week. As the drawings are approved, our architects begin developing what are called construction documents. Construction documents are essentially the instructions that are used by the contractors and the subcontractors to build the project. They're the instructions from which the final prices are eventually secured. Our intent is to complete the construction document phase of each project within the next five months, and as that occurs and beginning this coming August, we'll begin presenting final prices for the board's consideration. At the same time, we're also moving forward on the furniture front. We've begun the process of furniture layout and furniture selections for each of our bond projects. Our target remains the summer of 2009 for completion of all of our projects. The only exception to that will be the music building, which will have a somewhat later finishing date, and we are targeting that currently for December of 2009. Members of the board might recall that the Office of Planning and Construction, along with Brodus and Associates, our project managers, made a lengthy presentation to the board at a board retreat in early February. In light of the escalation of construction costs during the previous year, the board directed Brodus to help us identify all possible cost control strategies, that is, things that could be done to bring the projects to completion, to bring them to completion within budget, and to do all that without compromising building quality. Tonight, we're here to report to you that significant progress in those areas is being As you can see on the slide, cost control strategies, a lot of these are sort of techie terms, and we have our technical experts with us later on to answer questions if you have them, but value engineering, constructability sessions, that is, we've had a number of sessions trying to figure out ways that costs can be brought down, once again, without sacrificing quality. Schedule compression, which will lead to savings, because every day, every month that we wait, prices for our buildings continues to grow. Strategic scheduling of contracts, and, most importantly for us this evening, procurement strategies. In fact, the procurement strategy or strategies that we're currently undertaking are innovative, innovative to Brodus and Associates, and unique to Texas Southmost College. What we're trying to do with those procurement strategies is maximize the available budget for all of our construction projects. There are an awful lot of ways we can do that. The five most important, however, you can see listed on the slide, that is, through brick veneer, that is, the bricks that we're using for the facing of all the buildings, through wood and roof sheathing, furniture, gypsum board, floor covering, but most importantly, as Mr. Gonzalez said, are bricks. At least, most important at the moment. We'll be back with roofing material later on. Brick material procurement. We issued a request for proposal, and a number of criteria were specified in that request. That is, the ability to supply the some 2.8 million bricks that we're going to be requiring for our bond projects. So ability, that is quantity, the ability to supply the quantity we need, also the ability to meet the specifications that we have. We're talking about quality here. Is the brick going to be of sufficient quality to last the length of time we want to be able to endure the conditions that it will face? Obviously, third is price, a major consideration in all of this, and not unreasonably, we Three respondents replied to the request for proposal, and our, as is our custom now, we had them do a mock-up, that is, to actually see what those bricks that they're offering to us are going to look like, and you can perhaps judge for yourself which one might be the best match.
And the recommendation is. Making decisions tonight.
Mr. Gonzalez, there is a correct answer to this question.
We've got the answer.
And the recommendation that we'll be making is to select the Barrow Brick Company as the best value respondent for brick material. The bottom line is at the bottom of this slide, the previous quote we had for the 2.8 million bricks required was $2.3 million. However, through the use of Brodus and their innovative procurement strategies, we're able to get that number of bricks for 1.6, under 1.6 million dollars of savings to us of $727,454. So very, very significant savings, and with those savings, we can cover other, other needs that the buildings, that the buildings have. And with us this evening, Mr. Chairman, to answer any questions you might have, we have several representatives from Brodus and Associates, and I'm sure they'd be willing to take any questions you have.
Gilbert, one of the things that I, one of the issues that I discussed with Dr. Pearson was the, when you deliver such a large quantity of goods in one specific area, that's what we're doing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's always an issue with damaged goods, and so we may not discover that they're damaged until we get to the portion of the piling that is going to be used in the construction phase. Is there anything in the contracts that we can include that allow us that any waiver of timeframes to accept non-conforming goods, i.e. damaged goods, can be in place so that the vendor can say, cannot say, well, you had ninety days to discover and to complain or to reject the non-conforming goods, i.e. the damaged bricks, and we've got ten percent of the bricks that are damaged, and now we have to eat those bricks? Is there anything that we can put in, in the, in the contracts to assure that?
Yeah, I'm sure we have, we have Mr. John Ullman with, by the way, with Royal Brick here, John, he's representing the firm. They also provided the face brick for the education business building, so they, they have a history of providing a quality product to this particular campus, and, but we had to go through a process of making sure that we dealt with the issues that you just mentioned, just the quality, price, and giving the best value for it.
And again, it may not be the, the, the brick itself, it may be, it was damaged in transit or something to that effect.
Right. We will have, as we accept the brick, we are going to have two full-time construction inspectors to observe the delivery and distribution of those products once they are received and actually signed off by the university and the college. So, we will have, we also procured some of this face brick for the kinesiology project. Even though we're not involved in that particular project, we wanted to make sure we provided value for that particular project and the campus in general. So we, that's what's driving the schedule in terms of delivery, and so it was a very, very short-lived schedule, and we made sure that we had the firm that was capable of providing that particular level of quality of product in a timely manner, and we have, we have obviously come to the recommendation that before you that we would like to use Royal Bricks. But we will have, we will have superintendents on site, inspectors full-time on site to making sure that they are received in the proper manner, that they're not damaged. We do have incorporated in that $2.8 million, a ten percent of waste factor included in that particular price to making sure during construction that there isn't going to be some damage because of just the handling of the product and not being very efficient in terms of cutting brick and so forth. So we have those elements included in, in the price and the quality and the RFP.
And I know that everybody's asking, where are we going to store at one point five in of the bricks?
The kinesiology project will have their face brick delivered exactly to their particular site, and the remaining we will, we will store at the ITAC campus in the parking lot that we're going to fence off, and we're going to sign every project, we're going to gate and separate each particular project, the amount of brick that they have relevant to each particular project. So that's going to happen at the ITAC.
So all the brick is going to get delivered at once?
Yes, sir.
Is the biomedical learning center included in this brick purchase?
No, it's not, but it, but we certainly have the, we do have the, the option to go ahead and at that unit price, purchase additional face brick.
So it will be the only one that's not delivered in that first?
Correct. But we could add it, Dr. Garcia, to that particular order and take advantage of that good pricing that we've received and, and just have it sit there for when that particular project gets started.
The only comment I would have about storing the brick at the ITAC is make sure the government doesn't see and think it's a brick for the fence, so, you know, keep it away.
Do we have, I hadn't thought about that, Eddie.
Well, that's nice. I have it as a law.
Do you think, do you think we might have to run that through Homeland Security? We may have, doesn't it?
Question, Gilbert. I'm also concerned about the security, I mean, a fence, anybody could just, yeah, I mean, no, you can come in, tear the fence down, and just, you know, walk away with, you know, two million bricks, you know, overnight. People can, people can move fast around here, so do you have, what kind of security are you allowing?
Well, I think we're going to have the UT Browns, Texas Southmost College Police, we're going to make sure that that's brought to their attention that they do have some, some product out there, but they're, they're fairly heavy, aren't they, not, Mr. Ullman?
It doesn't matter.
They feel safe.
I have a large fence around two million bricks, and it takes a lot of work. It takes a forklift, a bunch of trucks, and let me give you, put this into some quantities for you, this is sixty rail cars or 250 trucks, so they have to be working very hard, and it would be very difficult to not be noticed. In my yard, every blue moon owl has something stolen, and the way they do it is they get on top of the brick and throw them over the brick, over the fence, but they don't get many. It, it would be very difficult, it's going to be difficult to move this many bricks. It will take.
We broke one record here, don't.
No challenge.
We just got to make sure that, that it's well guarded. The other thing is that I hope you're not stuck on that ten percent faulty brick, that you, you have some leeway and that.
Well, I don't think, I think Gilbert is answering the question as to missing and takeoff sometimes, maybe brick over a door when it was drawn as wood, and you decide you want brick over the door, not wood. Our standards will not permit us to deliver to you more than five percent faulty cracked brick. That is our standard. The physical qualities that we have to provide, and I have the experience with this plant, and y'all have also got three million of those bricks already here on the, on the existing buildings. The transportation issue is usually not a problem with the bracing and so forth, it's a very big business, and the physical qualities the brick must pass through a laboratory will assure that you get a quality brick that's traveled well. Yes, sir.
Gilbert, I have one question.
Dr. Robles?
We're, I'm sure that, but we haven't heard it from you yet, but that you are also looking at other cost savings in terms of getting blind doors and windows and carpets and large quantities.
Yes, sir. As, as Dr. Pearson mentioned, there, he pointed out five particular products that we are going to target, but we are, we've actually probably targeted about sixty different products that we're, we are going to come in terms of saving dollars. This is, as Dr. Pearson mentioned, this is a very unique approach. No one in the state is doing this, so this is, this is a way to be able to, to be able to maximize your dollars to buy you, you know, that additional building or that additional scope, that additional square footage, or that additional enhancement that we've been talking about. This is very unique to Texas Southmost College, and I think at the end of the day, you'll recognize how valuable this particular process is, and we can certainly demonstrate that. This is the first example.
And if I might, it's not only for an additional enhancement, it is for.
Meeting budget.
It is for meeting budget and meeting program, because right now, with, as you've mentioned earlier, I, I don't want people to think we're going to have extra money now socked away for increasing the program, is all I'm saying, for expansion of the program. Construction costs have accelerated such over the last few months that projects all over the state, all over the nation, are experiencing cost overruns and having to refine their programs and scale them back, and we want to try not to do that. So these cost measures are going to try to achieve delivery of the program as requested at the cost that was allowed.
If I might elaborate, Dr. Garcia, if I may, this is just a way to be able to hedge in terms of this volatile climate that we're dealing with in terms of labor shortages and also cost of products because of petroleum just basically skyrocketing. It's affecting everything downstream. By using this particular strategy, it hedges that, and it gives us basically, kind of offsets what's going on in the marketplace. So we'll be able to be able to, to come out ahead to this particular process and feel like this is a very valuable process that we have in place.
I think we're hedging on future price increases, absolutely. Very logical.
And also, when, when we receive subcontractor bids or bids from contractors, a lot of their work doesn't take place until several months downstream, six months, nine months, and they provide a pricing information nine months earlier, so they themselves have to gauge in terms of, or anticipate any additional cost inflation or cost increases. By using this particular process, we take advantage of volume purchases, and at the same time, it takes the volatility and the guessing out of, out of their particular bids through the entire process. So everyone comes out winning, and I think this is kind of a new education that we're going to have to deal with, with, with these subs, but I think that's something, if you can frame it in that particular manner, I think they'll be very open to.
And that's another important point here, that the subcontractors are not used to dealing in this way. They're used to ordering their own materials, project by project, whether it's furniture or bricks or, or other systems. So it really is, if you, if you're going to hear a few bumps along the way from subcontractors, perhaps that have never experienced this kind of, of purchasing process in lieu of what they normally do. We think it'll be, provide the best, best for our, for our purposes, so.
I'd like to commend the board for, for, for making that big, taking that big step in pushing that innovation and, and challenging them to come with some new innovative ways, because I, again, sometimes it takes a little push, and, and we as board members are responsible out there to the community for these projects, and we take that very seriously. So, and I know the community wants the products and they expect that, and so we thank you for making that effort on behalf of the whole community.
Well, Mrs. Freeland, I think, I think you took the words right out of my mouth, you know, as far as project management, you can, you can be an administrative project manager and just kind of flow with the process, but because of the board and because of Dr. Garcia challenging us to come up with innovative approaches, this is just one of them, and we do appreciate that challenge, and we take that very seriously because we are committed to making sure that this bond program for you, for this particular campus, for the constituents, is very successful.
Thank you.
So.
Now, this bid would include the additional modular size and colored modular size and all that as well, right?
Yes, special shapes and so forth. Yes, sir.
So you're talking about a little over three million bricks?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, may I have a motion then?
How much a motion?
Motion's been made by Ms. Freeland, second one, Dr. Robles to accept the proposal on the brick, submit it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tons of bricks.
Tons of bricks.
Tons of bricks.
Yeah, literally.
Okay, we move on to item number ten on the agenda, that is, a report by Dr. Roberto Robles concerning the Student Affairs Partnership Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Student Affairs Partnership Committee convened on May ninth, two thousand and seven. The committee discussed updates on several support programs, including the following. University Scorpion Scholars Program. This award gives students who graduate in the top ten percent of the class the opportunity to have their tuition fees and housing paid for four years. To be eligible, students must live in our service area, earn thirty semester credit hours each academic year, and maintain a 3.0 GPA. One hundred and twelve students participated in this program during the fall two thousand and sixth semester. All of these students were retained at UTB TSE this following semester, with eighty-five percent continuing their eligibility in the program. Second is the Student Employment Initiative. The Student Employment Initiative requires students to work on campus and take fifteen semester credit hours per semester while maintaining a GPA of 2.75. Through this program, students earn more than in many off-campus part-time jobs while at the same time helping other students. For example, many Student Employment Initiative students serve as tutors, mentors, instructional assistants, and lab coordinators. Seventy students participated in this program during the fall of two thousand and five semester and seventy-five during the fall of two thousand and six semester. Students in this program are exceeding expectations in both hours attempted and hours earned. The third is the Disability Services. Steve Wilder, Disability Services Counselor, provided an update on the disability services provided on our campus. He reported that three hundred and fifty-seven students received support services in the spring of two thousand and seven. Other highlights for two thousand and six, two thousand and seven academic year include fifty-one students from the cohort earned certificates or degrees last fall, and twenty-five students received degrees at our make commencement. Three new professional sign language interpreters joined the staff, including Patricia Palomino, Julie Armendaris, and Lead Interpreter Rose Landa. Services for deaf students have expanded, and we're now able to meet virtually all of our interpreting needs without depending on outside agencies. The number of deaf students enrolled at UTB TSE was twenty-three in the fall and seventeen in the spring. These numbers exceed all other Valley colleges except STC. Next on our list was the Student Health Services. Dr. Mari Fuentes Martin, Associate Vice President for Student Affairs and Dean of Students, reported that as a result of an internal audit, staffing changes have occurred and protocols are being drafted to ensure we are in compliance. Next on our list was Athletics, and Coach Dan Huntley reported that the athletic fee was approved by the legislature. He also gave an update on recruitment of local student athletes. He reported that we currently have twenty-six local athletes scheduled to play for us during the fall semester. He also reported that men's and women's soccer will begin in August. The students will be playing at Moinside Park.
Is Dan the coach now, or what?
He's the athletic director. It's written wrong.
And lastly, Student Publications, Ms. Aznet Cornejo, Coordinator of Student Publications, reported that the collegiate staff received seventeen awards during the Texas Intercollegiate Press Association Competition, which was held in March. She also provided an update on the progress that she and a committee of faculty, staff, and students are making in establishing a spring internet radio program in conjunction with our communications department. And that concludes my report.
Can I just ask a question on the Scorpion Scholars Program? Actually, those students graduate in the top ten percent of high school classes relative to this, is that a guarantee, or do they have to have something else to participate in this program?
They have, they have to apply, they have to graduate in the top ten percent of their class, they must live in the Texas Southmost College service area, they must earn thirty semester hours each academic year. Once they get here, they can take fifteen and fifteen in long semesters or less, twelve and twelve, and then take some summer classes, but they must complete thirty in a year, and they must maintain a 3.0 GPA at the conclusion of every year. If they meet that criteria, it's guaranteed for four years.
Okay, good, all right. Just my standing, if anyone. Does my standing offend her for anyone?
It absolutely is. Absolutely is. And what we're going to be, we'll be talking to you later on this summer, perhaps at the retreat, about perhaps restructuring the TSE stipend to focus more toward this kind of student. We offered only, it mentions here 100, I think, 112. We could have offered more and we could have expanded it outside our service area, for example, the Harlingen. And so if we can use some of our money to do that part of it and the other money to do the in-service area project, we'll be providing, we have many students who have made the decision to come here this year, who were top 10 for this reason, it makes sense to do anything else, frankly, for their parents or for themselves. So it attracts a group of students that we very much want to attract, especially for many of our newly installed academic programs.
There's a lot of talent out there and talented students out there and I think it's great that we have this opportunity for them. When they have to work and then go to school, it takes away from their study time and a lot of times it leads to graduating beyond four years. So we really want to work at getting them to graduate within the four-year period.
Is the money that funds this scholarship, is this money from the adblock?
No, sir. The money that funds, and I want to be corrected by somebody, Rosemary, please. People are very quick to correct, so I might as well pause and let it come out right.
It's a combination of different funding sources. The Board of Trustees many years ago set aside some funding for the top 10% and that's been in your budget for many, many years. And so we've redirected that funding along with designated tuition set-asides that we're now required to set aside because of the rate that we're at and new legislation last session that requires it. So we've put all that money together to be able to fund the full ride scholarship.
So part of it comes from tuition dollars and the other part comes from other dollars that we had already appropriated. TSE was, has for many years funded the top 10%, but it was in a very small amount. We were giving students something like $300 per semester and while that was nice, it simply wasn't powerful enough to attract or to help a student make an important decision like that. So this really pumps it up in a significant way. What we'd like to do is be able to do that more and perhaps not only for top 10%ers. So you can expand in a variety of ways.
Good, thank you, Dr. Garcia.
And the Student Employment Initiative, I think also is just really exciting to keep the kids on campus too, in close proximity, but give them an opportunity to work.
And the, and both, you notice these are experimental, 100 students here, 115, 75 here, and what we, flat rate tuition is another one that we've had great success with. Number of students that are taking courses more than 15 hours and succeeding in those courses because there's an incentive to do so with a flat rate tuition. We're looking at, we now have about two years' experience or at least two semesters in some programs, experience with each of those. And so now we're looking at that, we'll be making some recommendations for expansion based on those data.
Now, does the be on time fit some of these as well?
Yes, the be on time would also, would also allow students to meet the tougher criteria and get reimbursed for some of their tuition.
And on the disability services, I just want to add that we strongly encourage Mr. Wilder and his team to reach out to our high schools and try to bring in more of those kids that are disabled and let them know that we have our services available for them to get an education here on campus.
Thank you, Dr. Robles, for the good report. We now move on to item number 11, the construction report, Dr. Pearson.
It's going to be the brick master.
The brick master. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Construction on our campus is not just a process of bringing in the new, it's also a process of retrofitting and transforming the old, as the construction report tonight is going to make apparent. First, a house we saw last week, a house is moving on toward completion, the Neutra House out on Barretes, and as you can see from the coming photos, they're plastering. And as you look, they're plastering just about everything. They're plastering ceilings, they're plastering the walls, everything along the stairways and so on. Larry Loff and his crew are doing an absolutely spectacular job out there and when this little architectural gem is done, I think one of the most difficult things would be determining the best way to employ it. The Commandant's Quarters, work has just started. You recall we showed you the move of this several board meetings ago, the house was shifted. We now have two interior chimneys that are built and these interior chimneys don't just have a single fireplace, they have two fireplaces per chimney, so four altogether for the benefit of our provost, Dr. Jose Martín.
Is that with a new brick or is that the old?
Dr. Oh, actually this is brick that was cannibalized from the foundation of the old structure. The pedestrian bridge is open. We opened it one day before graduation and as many of us have already discovered, the pedestrian bridge works and it's also landscaped a little bit. The art gallery, what we hope will be one of the other gems on our campus, this is in Rusterburg Hall and we're taking what used to be the old print shop and we're turning it into a marvelous gallery, which is approximately 24 by about 55 feet. We're taking it all the way up to the structural beams. All of the materials, these hanging from the ceilings are going to be removed, rerouted, and so we're going to have a tremendous space, very high ceiling space, which will be just fantastic for exhibiting the Bustamante sculpture and all the works of our art department and our students. The Leitner Center, both inside and out, inside first, we're at the point where we're using the selected color schemes, painting the walls. The walls being painted, within the next week or so, the ceilings will go in, all of the electric, all of the AC and all of that's already in, and once that's done, then we'll be turning our attention to the tiles on the floor. But it's not just inside Leitner Center that I want to draw your attention to.
These are going to be for the advisory offices, for the many advisors that we've been adding over the years.
Outside the Leitner Center, now some of you may shed a sentimental tear over this. Not all of us, however, this proves to be one of the most durable structures on the UTB TSE campus. Not only did it last a long time, it's a good reason that it lasted a long time, the cement here was reinforced with one and a quarter inch rebar. This is the type of thing they use in fallout shelters and nuclear shelters and bunkers. Finally, the George Turon Sculpture Garden, we can call it complete, the sign is in, and ladies and gentlemen, the George Turon Sculpture Garden has sculpture in it. We have eight of these pedestals and they can be raised or lowered with additions so that we can accommodate all sorts of student works. We're not quite sure what these are, we're hoping that someone will inform us on this. Last and finally, turning to our new construction, progress is happening on the rec center. The ground is moving, the earth is being dug out, we're putting in pipes which are now carrying the plumbing, carrying the electrical wiring, and we're informed that the concrete foundation will be poured within the next two weeks. And that concludes the construction report. If we had an airplane on campus, would we have the enforced?
Oh, yeah, no, but in the, right. I just want on the record that we did not build that fountain here before.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. What's that?
We're building, we're not building anything in this place, we're simply planting some trees, laying some grass, and then straightening out that path a little bit. That's a very well-worn path and we're putting the, the shade will be needed because the advisors will be in the student union that you saw being renovated. Over 25 advisors will be housed there. So that's going to be a very, very busy place for students. We'll have a nice place outside, the front and the back for them when they're not being advised.
Of course, Dr. Pearson. I can't do some story, oh, pardon me. One of the things we had to do was leave a series of massive concrete beams about two feet underneath the surface. We simply couldn't pull them out, it would have been too expensive, there's enough room to plant the trees. We wondered what these things could possibly have been, it looks like the structure for a 10-story building. Our Director of Physical Plant, Abraham Hernandez, did a little bit of web research the other day and he discovered that this was the location, the foundation for what used to be the Service Club, that is the bar on the old Fort Brown. The Service Club.
So that's an explanation, why the foundation?
Obviously with that, with that one and a quarter inch rebar, they wanted the bar to last a long time. I think we need to view the construction reports from that era after a while. Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Okay, item number 12 is Dr. Garcia's report.
I'm going to just do one item tonight because we have, actually two items, although we have many things to talk about, but there's one that I, two that are particularly important. One has to do with our students that are going off to medical school and that are in part of our early medical school admissions program. We've had many firsts over the years, but, and during this time, our 15th anniversary of the partnership, we're celebrating another first. And this is our first graduate from the Early Medical School Acceptance Program who earned her MD this spring, this month. The program was established in 1999 in partnership with UTMB Galveston. More than a dozen students have gone on to medical school through this program and this spring, Marcia Mares became our first MD to be launched through the MSAP program. Before we play a short video, I want to mention that we just held orientation for the ninth cohort of students in the MSAP program last week. We have one student from St. Joe, two from BISD, one from Pace and Hannah, and two from Los Fresnos High School. They are Alejandra Delgado from St. Joseph's, Maria Hernandez from Los Fresnos, Jesús Medina, Los Fresnos, Umberto Mendoza, Hannah High School, and Maria Samires, Pace High School. They are innocent 18-year-olds about to be launched onto an adventure of the tide that you're about to see in this video.
It's match day at the University of Texas Medical Branch in Galveston and you can feel the excitement and anticipation. Next to commencement, this is the second most important day for graduating medical students. This is when they find out where they will spend the next three to six years training to be doctors. For Marcia Mares Moreira, reaching this point has been a journey of hard work and perseverance that began at the University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas Southmost College. In 1999, having just graduated from Los Fresnos High School, Marcia was accepted into the Early Medical School Acceptance Program at UTB TSE. The program is a partnership between UTB TSE and UTMB and addresses the doctor shortage in South Texas by encouraging local students to attend medical school. In exchange for good grades at UTB TSE and an acceptable score on the MCAT, the Medical School Admission Test, students are guaranteed a spot at UTMB.
It allows you to stay close to home, it allows you to be focused on your studies while you're at the university at Brownsville, and it gives you a good opportunity to be involved in the medical profession.
On June 3, Marcia graduates from UTMB as Dr. Marcia Mares Moreira, the first UTB TSE medical school graduate from the Early Medical School Acceptance Program.
Many individuals think that going far to, or going upstate to bigger universities will help them get a better education or will help them get a better lifestyle and that's not necessarily true.
At UTB TSE, Marcia earned a 4.0 grade point average, exceeding the program's requirement. In her junior year, she scored well on the MCAT. Her summers were spent not at the beach, but at UTMB taking classes. Four years later, in 2003, her hard work paid off. At UTB TSE's spring commencement, Marcia proudly carried the banner for the College of Science, Mathematics, and Technology. She earned a bachelor's degree in chemistry, graduating with highest honors, summa cum laude, the first in her family to graduate from college. That fall, she was on her way to pursue her dream of becoming a doctor.
It feels like yesterday I started medical school, most of our time is dedicated on studying, that the time passes you by and now you're in the moment where you just kind of look back and realize how far you've gone.
At match day, with family and friends looking on, Marcia opened her envelope and found out where she will spend the next three years. She had applied to six hospitals, but got her first choice of Pediatrics residency at UTMB.
She's an extremely focused, intelligent, put-together young woman. She just really is a wonderful representative of the program and she has shined here at UTMB and I know she will continue to shine here at UTMB in Galveston as a resident.
If this is something that you really want to do, anything is possible and all you need to do is try, be dedicated, and just know that you'll get through it.
You know, it's important and it's great to see young people like this succeeding. One of the important things that's happening here in our area is that, two things, one is that the attrition of doctors, those that are retiring, and over the next five years or so, we're expected to see at least about 20 doctors retiring from practice and at the same time, we're experiencing a tremendous growth in the population. So that in and of itself is going to create a great void for doctors here in the area and so I congratulate, you know, Dr. Garcia and everybody else, all the people that have been involved in this program, I think it's very important to get more of our students down there, up there to Galveston and other universities than, hopefully they can come back and practice here in Brownsville, it's a great opportunity.
If they don't come back, we can get Mrs. Gonzalez to call them. With that, I want to welcome Mrs. Gonzalez to the board meeting. It was planned.
I have one other item, although we could talk a lot about that one, our hope is, as you know, to work out the same kind of agreements with all of the medical schools and so that is, that is an aggressive goal that we have. There's no reason that we shouldn't have the same partnership that we have with UTMB with every other medical school and so we need your help in making that happen. The last item that I'd like to talk about today is really to introduce Dr. Tony Savoletta to talk about the legislative session and the results of the legislative session. As you know, it is just concluded and Rosemary Mafinas and Dr. Savoletta are going to present what finally happened after the last gavel was landed.
Sign died.
That's right. Dr. Savoletta and Mrs. Mafinas.
Thank you very much, Chairman Gonzalez, President Garcia, members, and the starters, of course. We, over, you know, over the course of the session, we received almost on a daily, well, on a daily basis, all kinds of emails and analyses of what's going on in the session and towards the end of the session, one of the most appropriate headings that I think we received was the analysis of the session, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and then thinking about how to characterize the outcome of this session, both good and bad, that fits. The 80th session of the Texas Legislature ended on Monday, the Monday of this week and still at the 11th hour, which would have been for that session, late Sunday night, there was no agreement on the budget and in fact, in a last-ditch effort to see if there was some way, some procedural action that would allow us to, from the floor, introduce special items into the bill and I was laughed at by asking that, but I was calling, I was late on Sunday night, the person on the other end of the phone said, "You gotta be crazy, you know, we don't even, we don't even think we're going to pass the budget." The budget was passed for the, for the State of Texas, which includes the higher education budget for FY '08 and '09 with mixed results. Let me, just prefacing, Rosemary and I are going to do this together, let me preface my remarks by reminding you that for the last, at least the last three sessions, the 78th, the 79th, and the 80th session, and that's about 2003 to the present, we've been involved in discussions at the highest level regarding the need to produce a new higher education funding mechanism in Texas, something that works really. That is a formula which incentivizes and rewards institutional growth and special characteristics of institution and which reflects the demographic changes and realities of- of institution, and which reflects the demographic changes and realities of Texas's future. And I think we fit, we fit right into that, I don't have to convince you. The current system rewards well-funded universities, so that the more, the more funding you receive, the more you get, and the wealthier your parents are, the more able you are to go to the university that receives more. And we'll look at some numbers relative to full-time student equivalencies in just a minute. While that conservation, conversation continued into the opening days of the session, it was quickly derailed, so that while we realized some notable gains in funding, as you'll see in just a second, for '08 and '09, in fact, the hard work, the strategic planning that UTB TSC engages in over the course of the interim was largely not rewarded, and we'll want to, we'll want to talk about that. So with that, just as a brief introduction, I'd like Vice President Martinez to review the revenue stream, the general revenues and others, other revenues, and then I'll come back and recap the, what was, what happened with the outcome of our special item requests and bills. Rosemary?
Well, we've been watching the multiple iterations of funding over the course of the session, and these numbers before you are the final conference numbers. We're going to start with funding for Texas Southmost College, and I want to tell you that the numbers presented are in millions. The first column shows you what the funding was for Texas Southmost College for the current biennium, the '06-'07 biennium. The second column shows you what it will be for 2008, 2009, and then the third column represents the percentage increase. And although those percentage increases look significant, I need to tell you that we've had significant growth on this campus, and we will present a chart that will show you the change in general revenue funding per full-time student equivalent that really turns this information into an apples-to-apples comparison, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The net increase then for Texas Southmost College for the biennium is expected to be $4.2 million, and that includes both general revenue from the formulas and general revenue from the dollars allocated for group insurance for employees. This next chart presents the same kind of information, but for UT Brownsville. The first column again is the current biennium, second column is the 2008 and '09 biennium, and then the third column is the percentage increase. The different lines are broken out to show you what we will receive from the formula funding, going from $33.2 million to $38.3 million, or a 16% increase. The second line shows the increase that we will receive for debt service, and this is related to having full debt service for both the SETBI facility, the LHS facility, the Education Business Complex, and now the new building, the Science Learning Technology Building, that is yet to be constructed. And so we will receive a 64% increase in funding, or almost $5 million in funding for that specific facility. The third line is insurance, just like the college, the university also receives funding for employees. So overall, we're expecting a 25% increase, or $11 million over the biennium for UT And in total, for both institutions, which is really the number that we look at because we put both GR dollars together to fund the UTB TSC budget, and so we're expecting to have a 15-point, almost $300,000 increase, or a 21% increase in GR. But over the same period, we've had significant increases in semester credit hour growth. The university experienced an 11% increase in semester credit hour production. The community college experienced a 7% increase. Overall, over the UT campuses, some of the campuses remain flat, and some even had significant decreases in enrollment. UTB TSC was one of the few campuses that posted, both on the university side and the community college side, significant increases in enrollment. So when you take this funding data and convert it to increases in general revenue per full-time student equivalent, those significant numbers that appear to be dramatic for the university really are average and in line and in keeping with everybody else. We're right in the middle there, in the yellow, so you look at someone like UT Arlington, their particular increase, it represents a 6% increase in full-time student equivalent comparable to ours. The Permian Basin number that you see up there, the 36% increase, is because Permian Basin received a significant special item for institutional development, and so we're assuming that that's program development. UT Dallas also received a special item, and there are multiple campuses, UT campuses included on this list, that did receive special items. UT Tyler received a special item, but in spite of that, their GR did not keep up with the growth in, growth in enrollment that they had. So overall, you see that campuses experienced from a high of 36% increase in GR to a minus at 8%, to most of the campuses being around that 5% and 6% number. And so now I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Savoleta so that he can provide details on the other items of the HB1.
Thank you, Rosemary. The, I'll remind you that the number that you saw in terms of increase in general revenue for both UTB and TSC combined over the next biennium was $15.28 million. And as wonderful as that seems, and it will be well-used, the reality is that there are certain, many things that happened during the session that were disheartening and even unbelievable. While we continue to struggle to provide the community and region the same level of higher educational opportunities that the rest of the state enjoys, I'll use a simple example, and not intended to offend our sister institutions, but UT Arlington, for example, remember, we received an increase of $15 million over the next biennium. They received $12.5 million in health armas monies because of their declining enrollment. So in other words, maybe if we had done nothing, and just closed the doors, and just locked the doors, and went away, and had a declining enrollment over the next biennium, we could then make more in the next legislative session than we actually were able to get this time. It's hard to understand and/or to accept how those things happen. Looking again at this slide, thank you very much, Rosemary, I was just blown away when that came across my email this morning, and while Vice President Martinez has provided the columns in her, in the total graph, or our table, actually, which look at the gain between, between '08, '09, over '06, '07, I looked at it a different way, and I saw that, in fact, the UT Permian Basin full-time equivalent to GR is 13, it's not on, it's not on that graph, it's on another part of it that you're not seeing, is $13,516. That means compared to UT Brownsville's, $7,000, so that UT Permian Basin has approximately doubled the number of dollars for every student that we have. Now, I don't understand why their students deserve to have two-for-one dollars than our students do, but that's basically what the funding tells you. UT Pan American is basically the same as us, $7,000. UT Tyler, about $10,000, and so forth. And as Vice President Martinez pointed out, the differences are wholly due to the special, special item funding.
What did Tyler do to get so little?
Excuse me?
What did Tyler do to get so little?
What did they do to get so little? I have no answer.
Minus 8%.
I have no answer.
What about the growth, the population?
They challenged the speaker.
It's very little. It's very little.
That's right.
Yeah, they're...
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just say, may I commend as a community member and a board member, the administration and all the staff, faculty, everyone here, because here with this, and what we've always been working with less than everybody else, we still have an increase in student participation rates this last year. And I want to commend you, Dr. Garcia, and the entire staff for, for making the best of what we have, and that's what we have to do, and that's what, and that's what you have continued to do, and we, thank you, and we still have good outcomes with our students. And we have to do that, and I want the community to know that. You know what you can do? You can get out and vote when the time comes. That's the answer to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, in preparing this, this presentation and looking at the overall community college numbers, that part of it, I was very interested to see that our, sister community college to the west, South Texas College, only increased by 1.8%, whereas TSC increased by 6% over the biennium. So our, their funding, now their institution that has experienced dramatic growth and has led the state for a number of years, but in fact, in this next biennium, they will be strapped.
I just wanted to mention that the only other factor that affects, aside from specials that obviously skew these numbers, the other thing that affects comparison is the kind of students that comes to the university. And the reason that's the case is because you get paid more for upper-level and graduate students than you do, reimbursed, than you do for freshmen and sophomores. So at UT Dallas, the pyramid of, our, in comparison to us, UT Dallas is an inverted pyramid. They have more students at the upper division and graduate level and less at the freshman and sophomore level. So even though we have almost the same number of students at UT Dallas, without specials, our formula dollars are going to look greatly disparate. So if you talk about South Texas College, our enrollment increase at the community college this year came from the dual enrollment students. And remember what, why that hits us in a doubly negative way. I mean, a positive dual enrollment, we get students, that's right, we get students in, they take more hours, there are free courses for those students, but they cost us upfront. We pay for faculty to teach those courses, and eventually we generate some reimbursement dollars, but remember, those are still at the lowest level of reimbursement. So everything that we do has a balancing effect.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry, let me ask you a question. So we pay for the faculties in all the high schools?
Not all of them do.
We pay for those classes taught as dual enrollment classes.
And there is a stipend that, again, there is a stipend that we pay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And yeah, I'll tell you, they're pushing it, and all the high schools, yeah, I mean, I think it's great that kids are getting excited about competition, but you're right, it's a double.
And we will get reimbursed for that, I mean, just to remember. We'll reimburse for some of that, but for two years subsequent to that, and then in student success, we think somebody will get reimbursed for that. It may be us, or it may be UT Austin, depending on where the student goes.
And again, may I reiterate, closing the gap is a huge thing in the state of Texas, and we're addressing that. That's where all that, that closing the gap is, is in the first and second year. That's where you have to bring them up, and we are trying to address it, it's such a huge need, so we are doing our job and trying to do the best.
But it's an expensive job.
It is expensive.
With very few resources, is simply the point that I was trying to make.
Please, Dr. Garcia, just a couple more questions, because I believe it is so critically important that you hear about our special item package that was developed over the course of the last couple of years, and that proposed eight special items for a total of $12 million. So going forward into the session, we were prepared, and I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a brief overview of what those things were, and we made, when the appropriations committee began to meet, all of the institutions, all 35 institutions of higher education, not just the UT system, but everybody, was asked, because you can imagine what the laundry list looked like, and they said, prioritize, go right, prioritize, your three top priorities, we don't want to see anything below three, come back. We strategized, we did that. That took us from about the $12 million that we were proposing down to about $7 million. And we were also told, and this is all the kind of hallway stuff that happens, we were also told that if you expected your special items to survive, once you've written the riders, then you have to have a member of appropriations supporting them, period, because if you don't, then you don't have any, you don't have any hope. And we did. So we had, we had our top three items, we had our supporter, we had our riders written, and so off went the appropriations committee to do their work, and as they produced HB1, as HB1 came out of appropriations, UTB was included in that bill, and our top three items, which of course were our professional, professional shortage, which is a nursing program, the Institute for Homeland Security, and the funding for the Math and Science Academy. Those were our top three special items, and we fully expected to have something come out of that. Some of the outcomes, and I'll share those with you, are just beyond belief, but as David, Mr. Levita pointed out, we understand the politics of it. The, UT Permian Basin, in fact, received 71% of the special items that were awarded to the UT system went to that single school, 71%. The UT Austin Marine Science Institute...
It's good to be king.
Excuse me?
I said it's good to be king.
Got to be king. Exactly. The UT Austin Marine Science Institute, Institute received special item funding, and we had proposed funding for our cultural studies center, it was not funded. The UT Dallas received special item funding for science and math, we had proposed funding for our science and math academy, theirs was funded, ours was not funded. UT Tyler proposed $1.5 million for institutional enhancement, we had proposed money for instructional enhancement, theirs was funded, ours was not funded. So then where did all the money go? And where did all the money go? You'll recall that in the early, early days of the session, in February, Governor Perry rolled out his higher education plan, and it, and there was immediate analysis of what the plan would portend, and how it would affect us, and how it would affect system schools, and schools in general, schools along the border and in South Texas, and it was, very simply stated, very scary. Had his plan in total been adopted, there was no telling where we would be today, or what we would be talking about. But then it all sort of went quiet. So during, during the month of March and April, we didn't hear much about it, but we heard, we heard rumors about the governor's men, and the governor's, governor's people. Governor's people were around, governor's people had come to visit, and at the last moment, and in conference committee, major portions of the governor's plan, all of a sudden, appeared in conference. And so that as the, as the HB1 was transformed, and was kicked, and voted out of conference, and went to the floor to be voted, and there was, there was really considerable doubt as to whether it would be approved or not, there were things that were totally unrecognizable, except for the fact that they had, were part of the governor's plan. An example of that is what is called Texas Competitive Knowledge Fund, the TCKF, that no one has ever heard of. I made several calls into the UT system today, asking about this. I wanted to know what sort of, where can I read the formula? How can I find out why UT Austin received $39 million, why A&amp;M received $40 million, why did U of H receive $10 million? How was it calculated, and how can I know about this? I was asked, I was told that I probably shouldn't be asking those questions. That's $100 million, $100 million out of potential funding in GR, all UTB TSC wanted was a couple, which would have been, we would have been able to leverage that tremendously. Two other programs received funding that are, well, that were unexplainable, are really, really unexplainable in many ways. The total, and so I started sort of, I mean, it's getting depressing now, a total of, a total of $250 million in general revenue that were not earmarked in the HB1, were implemented into the conference committee and kicked out into the budget, and there's good news and bad news in that. There's a hun, and I'll end on this, there's $145 million, someone asked earlier about the Be On Time program. The Be On Time program was greatly increased in its funding, and there's $145 million in new money for student aid, for all kinds, from everything... from the Student Work Study Program to the Be On Time program, to the Texas Grant Program. And we have to gather our forces and be smart about how we implement our students and plug our students into accessing that money, because there's an awful lot of new money there. So that's the, UT Brownsville, Texas South Most College did not receive a special item. It's extremely depressing, especially when the need is so great, the justification is so obvious, when others receive exactly, exactly the kinds of funding that we ask for, the same kinds of programs. There you have it in a nutshell. We consider, we can, we continue to study it, to review it, to try to understand it, to find out where we can best make entree into new funding. Someone asked a minute, I know it was mentioned, and I'll quit, I'll end on this line. I guarantee you that there, those parts of the governor's plan that were not implemented in this session are, will come, will be back. And one of those is, as President Garcia was mentioning earlier, is testing all disciplines, exit tests for graduation, and then funding institutions based on those. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
It's just, and I can't understand why all the universities that got short, the short end of the stick, so to speak, couldn't have banded together and attacked the Permian Basin 36%, you know, and I just, I don't know if it happened too fast.
They were attacked on the floor of the House and trying to, you know.
Walk out.
Yeah, they were, it did happen, but they were not successful in seeking to speak.
That was an attempt to do, it didn't work.
Any more?
I just wanted then to finish out the session, let you know that our athletic fee bill did pass. It passed amended and we are very, very appreciative for those legislators who supported our efforts at expanding, expanding athletics and also in expanding the other support services that are, that now this will allow us to provide for our students. And that concludes my report.
Let me, at my peril, just one comment. It was, the highlight of the session was, was working with our new, our new representative, Eddie Lucio III, and his staff especially, and watching them grow and develop and learn and teaching them really, and having that opportunity to explain to them what a rider was and how to file it and what, those kinds of things. And so over the course of the session, they really developed and it was an awful lot of fun. They'll, they, we expect great things from them vis a vis UTB TSC in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Savaleta. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. We're going to move back to item number two, which is the executive session on the agenda. And so the board will not convene into executive sessions provided by chapter 551 of the government Thank you. The board will not convene into regular session. We have item number three.
I know.
Which is consideration possible action on a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Bambilla, unit number 2B in Brownsville. And I'd ask for a motion to approve the contract and resolution.
So moved.
Which is made by Dr. Robles, second by Ms. Zimmerman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, non-motion carries.
And that's the purchasing unit for $44,000.
Yes, that is it. That is the only item on the, on that agenda. So item number 13 is the proposed meeting for the board. We have a board retreat on June 15th and 16th in Chachalaca and Los Fresnos. On Thursday, June 21st, we have the UTB TSC Laguna Madre Learning Center Board Meeting. We're going to do that in that area, Port Isabel. July, we have no board meeting. We have a board meeting on August 30th and then September 27th. So that is the end of the agenda items. So at this time, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
I know.
The teachers given us. Let's go.
No.